Yeah. Usually he's about 7:32.
Nobody's gonna notice when she treats this in here?
Try so often.
You're ready to start here. We'll call the meeting to order if you'd like to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. We've got a nice agenda. Will you call the roll, please?
Sloan?
Here.
Henning?
Here.
Gorman?
Here.
Merkel?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Lieberman?
Dietering?
Here.
We excused Dennis once, is that enough?
We'll have to do it again.
I move we excuse Dennis because he's out of town on vacation.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Sloan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have two special presentations this evening, and we'll start with the Oaths of Office. So I'd like to call forward Martina, Rick, and Matt and Brian. Okay, we'll start with Martina. Will you raise your hand?
I am Martina Dillon.
I'm Martina Dillon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And to faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Law Director of the City of Clayton. Of the Office of Law Director of the City of Clayton. Martina. We did swear Martina in earlier, but we wanted everybody to be able to see it tonight. Okay, Rick?
I, Richard C. Rose.
I, Richard C. Rose.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of City Manager of the City of Clayton.
Of the Office of City Manager of the City of Clayton.
Lieutenant Anderson, Chief. Matt?
I, Matthew T. Nealon.
I'm Matthew T. Nealon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Chief of Police of the City of Clayton.
Of the Office of Chief of Police of the City of Clayton.
I, Brian Garver.
I, Brian Garver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And the laws of the City of Clayton.
And to faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Fire Chief of the City of Clayton.
Of the Office of Fire Chief of the City of Clayton.
Brian, she's trying to get your picture.
Mayor and council members, and members of our residents, and all the good folks who work here for the City of Clayton, it's great to see this turnout tonight. I tell you, we have, Martina's in mind, we're kind of a little more formality just to do it in front of everybody, but tonight's really about Brian Garver and Matt Hamlin being promoted to chief spots. And I really can't say enough about these two gentlemen. They were both here when I came here, I'm in my 11th year, and I came in here as a Director of Public Safety and worked with both of them, they were both in supervisory capacities when I got here, and I can tell you that both of them have, besides just being outstanding individuals and working hard towards the goal, they both have done those things, they do whatever's asked of them, and they do it for the reason that they want to do the best job. They don't care about credit, they don't care about anything, they want to do the best job, and they want to do it for the City of Clayton. And I tell you, it shows every day, and I'm really proud of them. Also, though, they come from good families, and you can tell it, they are good people that come from good families, and, I mean, Matt's got his two other brothers on the Police Department there with him, they're all great people. Brian's brother is a captain at the Vandelia Fire Department, and he's a great person, he works for us part-time, I've met both of their parents, and I have to admit, they just come from good stock. But with enough of that said, I'm going to give you just a little bit of information. Brian, if, Matt, if I may ask you to step over here for just a second. Brian came to us, he's a firefighter since 1994, he worked at Vandelia and Harrison. He came to the City of Clayton in 1997 as a firefighter paramedic. He was promoted sometime in 2002 to fire captain, and then in 2011, actually, we went through an assessment center, and Brian was promoted to Assistant Fire Chief in 2011. He's a Vandelia graduate from Vandelia Butler, he has an associate's degree in EMS and fire administration from Sinclair. He's currently enrolled with Columbia Southern and is working towards his Bachelor of Science degree in fire science. I ask him for, give me your training records, I should have known better from a firefighter. Good God. We don't have that much time tonight, but basically, besides all the, all of the different services and the things that fire, all the different credentials firefighters get, and Brian's got an armful length of them, he's also been through numerous fire and EMS specific training, and plus, different instructor schools and supervisory school, he's completed, for those of you who know the fire service very well, he's completed fire officer's classes 1, 2, 3, and 4. That's as far as they go for the fire officer classes, he's also attended leadership classes 1, 2, and 3, which I believe that's as far as those go. Brian's an instructor at Sinclair, has been for years, does a great job, he was our training captain and instructor for many years, and he's just done a great job for us. At this time, it's been a kind of a tradition, since I've been here in the last 10 years, to ask the wives to come up, and Tanya, I would ask you if you would come forward, please. This is Brian's wife, Tanya, and we usually have a kind of a ceremonial badge pinning. Get this one, Brian was Assistant Chief here, I got to do that. I'm gonna strip you of your badge there. You want to turn this way so we can get it from the camera, please. Matt Hamlin also came to the City of Clayton in 1997. He was, I'm not sure, looking through his records, he was only, he was hired as a part-time officer in 1997, but was only a part-time officer for one month before they promoted him to full-time, which is a big step in the Police Department here, especially in the City of Clayton. He was promoted to Sergeant in 2001, that's before my time, but then, in 2008, we had an assessment center, we had a lieutenant retired, and Matt took the assessment center, we had, came out tops on the assessment center in 2008, and today, in 2014, he's now the Police Chief. Matt is a graduate of Northmont, he's an Inglewood resident, he's attended senior management courses in 2009, he went to the Police Executive Leadership College, which is a kind of an extensive upper management leadership strictly for police officers. And then in 2010, he had the opportunity and was able to go to Northwestern University, he traveled to Illinois, if I do, was it Illinois? Traveled to Illinois, and Northwestern University has a Staff and Command course, it is, it is a very intense course. He had to travel, it's a five-week, excuse me, a 10-week course, and they do it different places, different ways, but basically, it's a 10-week course, and you would go over for, he would travel over for two weeks at a time, and then come back for two weeks, travel over for two weeks, come back for two weeks, and they cover everything as far as, for management for police departments, they prepare you to be a chief, and they do a lot of things. I can act, I can tell you that I saw a lot of good come out of that, Matt, I saw some changes and some really growth in there from him going to that school, and he did excellent in the school, came out very well in his grades. Since that time, he went ahead and had the incentive to go ahead and finish his Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice from Columbia Southern University, so he's got his degree, and I can't say enough, good things. Matt's and Brian both have been the operational people of the department, even though I was the Director of Public Safety and took the title of Chief, they've been the operational side of both departments, they do a lot of the day-to-day stuff, and they've done well with it, they continue to do well, and I have nothing but complete confidence that they're going to even do better as Police Chief. The City no longer needs a Director of Public Safety, we have two good qualified people who can be Chiefs. So, with that said, Ms. Julie, I would ask you to come forward. I will say, both of these got brand-new badges for the positions, we haven't had Chief badges here for a tremendous amount of time. You don't have to fasten it, just get it on. There's always more things I think I'm going to say, when you get up here, you forget half of them, but at this time, I'm going to let these two have a chance to say a few words, so, and thank you, everybody.
I had to write a few things down. First off, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for your support these past 18 years, I appreciate it, I really do. Second, I'd like to thank City Manager Rick Rose for all of his support and encouragement. He's been a great mentor these past seven years, and a true friend, and he has set the bar very high here at Clayton, and I hope, and I will strive to try to pass that bar. Third, I'd like to thank the professional officers of the City of Clayton Police Department, without your encouragement and support, that I'm here, and I'm very proud to lead all of you, you're all very fine officers. I'd like to say thank you to my wife for the past 18 years, thank you for your support, without you, I probably wouldn't be here. And last, I'd just like to say I look forward to serving the citizens of Clayton, and I will like to continue to provide the excellence police services that we've always provided, and that would be my goal. Thank you.
And trying not to copy Chief Hamlin, you know, these things, but I'd like to thank God for the opportunity even to be in this position, have this opportunity, thank mayor and council for the opportunity and showing the confidence in me to be able to lead this department along with the firefighters. You guys have supported the department over the entire time I've been here, and we've advanced because of that, without you, we couldn't, we can't be the department that we are today. A lot of that goes to you, and then following your guidance and carrying out the mission of the city. I'd like to thank, yeah, Rick Rose, he's given me the opportunities here as Assistant Chief, and now as Fire Chief, and, you know, a great mentor, I've learned a lot from him over the years, and how to lead, and how to approach things, and how to look at something, big picture, and make good decisions, and I will strive to exceed what he has laid before us and do great things. I'd like to thank my parents, you know, without them, you know, good foundation.
Are your parents here?
Yes, they are.
Oh, good.
So, I'd like to thank my kids, I love them, you know, and my wife, of 20 years this year, you know, I can't believe it, it's been a good riding, without her support, I couldn't even come close to succeeding the way I have, and the department, you guys have a great fire department, I couldn't do this without them, I may get some of the credit, but they deserve it all. I love to be with them, I love to go in the trenches and make, get things what they need, and they're a great fire department, and the community is fortunate to have them out there in their time of need, and I will, we will strive as a department to meet the need of the community anytime they need it, in any way they need it, so, we just thank you.
Counsel, I'd like to indulge your, for just another moment here. It started in June of this year, I'll be, I'll start my 35th year in law in Pittsburgh, this morning originally in the City of Springfield. I'd like to ask my wife to let it step back just a second. As you can tell, we're just about the same age. She wasn't, she would tell you that she wasn't old enough to date, and I put one of the first part, but I'm not sure that's important. However, she's, besides supporting me through all the different things that we've had, she was around, she was around when I was promoted to Lieutenant in 1991, pinned my badge on then, when I became Captain in 98 in Springfield, and pinned my badge on then, and in 2004, I was very fortunate to be able to bring a job here as the Director of Public Safety, get this job, and came and pinned my badge at that time. So she asked me, "No, I ain't shit on you." No, I don't, but I said, "I would like to at least introduce you to everybody and say thank you, and I look forward to several more years or many more years too at the City of Clayton, so thank you all."
Okay, I think we have one other presentation, if we could call Tim Craft from the State Officer, State Auditor's Office forward, and Kevin?
Well, it's not every day that the Auditor State gets to hand out these awards, you know, usually when the Auditor State comes knocking on your door, it's sometimes usually not a good thing, but one of these few times it is. Today, I'm here to present the City of Clayton Financial Director, Kevin, with the Auditor State Award. The Auditor State Award with distinction is given to those entities that file an annual CAFER and a timely financial report in accordance with GAAP, as well as receive a clean audit report. A clean audit report means that your financial audit did not contain any findings for recovery, material citations, material weaknesses, significant deficiency, or single audit fines or any questionable costs. Basically, put it this way, the Auditor State's audit audits somewhere around 5,600 public entities, and less than 5% of all 5,600 qualify for this award. Just to kind of put in perspective, that's not easy to obtain, and so I think Kevin should definitely be honored, and the City Council, with that, I will present Kevin with his Audit Award with distinction.
I would like to say that the audit is based off everyone in the city, all the departments, the Road Department, Police, Fire, following the policies, procedures we have in place, so that we meet all the requirements of revised code, and get purchase orders before we make expenditures, so a lot of recognition goes to them, because I just pulled it all together, but they do it day-to-day, so I appreciate all their assistance.
Kevin, what's a CAFER?
Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Okay, well, that's all of the fun stuff that we get to do, we'll move to our hearing, so anybody that has to leave, feel free.
Hello, Mark.
Mark?
Assistant Chief.
Yeah.
So clearly a hard end.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
The real world.
Oh, good, yeah, I'm sure.
Everything all right?
Oh, fine, fine.
You staying out of trouble?
Oh, yeah.
Better used to. Getting easier, isn't it? Where's Mark, he's a jukebird, right?
Let's see, uh, it's not saying. I presume Glenn's gonna... Are we ready, Glenn? You ready?
Is Martina running the hearing?
Oh, well, I can run the hearing, I just thought you would do the presentation, are you gonna? Okay. Just to clarify for our hearings this evening, we will first ask Glenn to give us her perspective on what we're doing this evening, and then I'll ask for proponents, and I'll ask for opponents, and anybody in the gallery is encouraged to speak at that time, if you have anything, please come up and give us your name and address and make your comments. Okay, Glenn?
Okay. Good evening, everyone, I am here, we have, for the hearing tonight, we are looking at three properties which are looking to get their agricultural district recertified. Every five years, properties that have an agricultural certification need to get recertified. The purpose of the certification is that it helps protect farmers from nuisance lawsuits, from things that, you know, with runoff or other things, so fertilizer runoff from their farms that might affect other folks, which are part of doing their business, it helps protect them from that. It also helps them to defer certain assessments, so if the city were to come in and say that they needed to put in sidewalks, it would help protect them from that, because that's not the sort of thing that's really critical for a farm or agricultural operation. It also helps provide them some scrutiny from eminent domain actions, to protect them, to make sure that properties aren't taken without the due course of law. To qualify for an agricultural district recertification, properties need to have produced at least $2,500 over the last three years, and they need to present those properties for recertification every five years, as we discussed before. The three properties that we are looking at are, one is owned by Russell and Anna Seiler, they are at Haber Road and Sweet Data Ridge Road, I believe you have maps in your packet to help identify those locations. The next is from Benjamin Grossberg, which is at 4675 Phillipsburg Union Road, and the third is from John and Sandra Polson, which is on Diamond Mill Road. All the properties are over 10 acres, and you have three options tonight in terms of, as you look at these properties and as we hear from folks, the options that council has is to approve the agricultural recertifications, they can approve those recertifications with modifications, or you can reject the application.
Okay, let's take them one at a time, will you read the parcel number and names for the first one?
It's parcel M-60-03-006-0006, owners Russell and Anna Seiler, trustees.
Is there anybody to speak on behalf of the Seilers? Any opponents? Okay, will you read the title to the second one?
It's parcel M-60-03-003-0035, owner Benjamin S. Grossberg.
Anybody to speak on behalf of Mr. Grossberg? Any opponents? Read the title of the third one.
Parcel M-60-03-013-0010, owners John and Sandra Polson.
Anybody to speak on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Polson? Opponents? Okay, we'll have this later on the agenda to discuss and take action on, thank you, Glenn, and we'll close the hearing. Okay, that brings us to the Clerk's Report.
That before you, the council made the minutes of March 20th, 2014.
I'll move for approval.
Second. A motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel.
I'll have to stay.
Oh, will you call the roll, please?
Sloan?
Yes.
Henning?
No.
Epstein?
Stay.
Gorman?
Here, or yes.
Merkel?
Yes.
Kelly?
Here.
And Dietering?
Yes. Anything else from the clerk?
No, thank you.
Okay, we have one item of old business, one ordinance, will you read the title to that, please?
Ordinance O-03-14-06, an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Clayton codified ordinances.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. Chief, could you just briefly tell us, we had a little bit of discussion about this, tell us what you had sent, follow-up information you had.
Yes, ma'am. Give me a second, I'll pull it out, so I don't skip any points, but basically, there were questions raised at the last meeting regarding what exactly the changes were in the ordinances, and I don't recall, I think there was 35 or 36 changes, and they're all to the State of Ohio, Ohio Revised Code. Actually, there were 35, 13 of them were traffic-related statutes, 22 were criminal statutes. There were a few of them that were raised questions specifically about speed limits, about, there was something about bicycles, so I asked at that time, I asked Chief Hamlin if he would take a look for specific language to see actually what changed in a couple of the topics, because quite frankly, 35 of them is quite a bit to go through. And he did provide me with information, and basically, in some of these, it's strictly a one change or two changes, such as in bicycle, definition of a bicycle changed other than a tricycle design to other than a device that is solely, that was the change in the ordinance for the State of Ohio, and we mirror those changes with our codified ordinances. And the reason we do that is the State of Ohio, when they pass a law, we are, we don't have to have a codified ordinance that matches that law. The reason that municipalities pass ordinances that mirror state law are so that basically we can, we can draw from the revenue, if there's fines imposed for those penalties, if somebody's arrested and there's a fine imposed, if it's a municipal law, we can take part of that fine that comes back to the City of Clayton. If we charge under state statute, then we get none of the fines. There's also some advantages, there's some reasons we don't have city codes that match all state statutes, because quite frankly, if we incarcerate someone, and it's under the city statute, then we're responsible for the incarceration fee of whatever it is now, 65 or 75 or 85 dollars a day. So, all municipalities do these things, but when we, when we bring for the changes every year, the changes are strictly verbatim, word for word, from the state statute to what is brought to us for the municipal statute. Therefore, there isn't any interpretation, there isn't any change, it's really nothing, it's a formality that we have to vote on, or we have to not keep our statutes in place. If we didn't have the statute, we would still arrest under State of Ohio Revised Code for the exact same thing, we're required to do that, so.
Any other discussion?
So essentially, we're just updating our manual.
That's exactly it. If the state changed a word in the statute, we have to change that same word in our statute.
I was a little concerned when it first came in, because we didn't have an explanation of what any of them were, and this, the last one, I thought was still kind of strange, improperly handling a firearms in a motor vehicle. Is that hunting?
Proper handling of firearms generally means the way you carry the firearm in the vehicle.
Okay.
If the weapon is loaded and within reach, it's against law, it's a felony, but if you have a weapon that is in the trunk, therefore, you can carry it that way, so it's safe.
Right.
So what they usually do is, they don't change it, it's like, it's like the City Manager said, they usually amend the wording, the legislatures, when they do the Ohio Revised Code, they'll take out a word, literally, they'll take out a word or add a couple of words, and that's the changes.
I had a hunting buddy ask me day before yesterday, he said, "Are they going to take, I can't take my shotgun and hunting?" I said, "Man, I have no idea, I will ask, I promise I will ask."
Generally, they change or take out a word. The example that the City Manager gave on the bicycle is the best one, they changed it from a tricycle to basically, they're defining a bicycle, so.
All right, so my hunting buddy's happy.
Your hunting buddy should be safe.
Thank you.
I would also add, the reason the change has usually come into play is because it's been challenged, there's been a case where if they make the law a little better, they change some wording, it better supports what the intent of the law is, so that's many of the reasons why there's changes.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
We have one ordinance under new business, will you read the title, please?
Ordinance O-04-14-07, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to designation of job categories and pay schedules.
Mr. Rose, will you be?
Yes, ma'am. The Assistant City Manager Debbie Manns put this together here as the Personnel, Human Resource Person for the city, but Debbie's on vacation tonight, she's in Florida visiting and taking advantage of the spring break. Basically, with the pay ordinance, the change in the pay ordinance is, all we've done is, we've added the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, a pay ordinance for both the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief, because there wasn't a position in the titles there. In doing so, what we've done is we've left the Director of Public Safety as a position in there, but it's vacant, there is not a Director of Public Safety, if we ever, the city ever chose to go back, it would allow that to keep in the same standard and stuff we have here. We've also vacated the Police Lieutenant and the Assistant Fire Chief's position when we, when we made the Chief of Police and the Fire Chief. Two other amendments we've made to the pay ordinance, one of them is in, well, one of them is substantial only in the fact that we, we have not had a planner in position for quite a while for the City of Clayton, and we didn't have an actual, we didn't have a pay position title for a planner, and we have advertised, and we're looking to hire a part-time planner for the City of Clayton, so what we did was plug in a planner in the pay ordinance and set a pay range scale in there for the planner. So that is a new position added that was budgeted for this year, we've been going without since the passing of Joe Klosterman. And then the last thing is just really a minor clarification, under the Fire Department, we had, we had four categories of, for part-time firefighters based on credentials, and our definitions, quite frankly, had, they were antiquated, there were, some of those certifications no longer were there, they've got, there are new certifications that fall in between, so we decided it would be much easier to clarify the terminology, and actually, what you see in front of you And actually, what you see in front of you should have, under the very first one, it says fire department. The first one, it says firefighter slash EMT, EMT isn't supposed to be on there, that's still a mistake. It's firefighter, and those are basically are paid-on car, people who are firefighter-only, who have no EMS training. And then we have firefighter, instead of saying EMT basics, we're saying that they're BLS, which is basic life support. So these firefighters are, have a firefighter credential, and they have EMS training to equal basic life support. Because there's a reason for that, because basically, as you go in for EMS billing and stuff, it depends on your credentials and your scales. The last category, we used to call it firefighters 1C slash paramedic, and we've changed that to say firefighter EMS, which is ALS, which is advanced life support. They can give drugs and do several different things. It's an additional training and what they're allowed to do under the medical license. So we felt this better reflected, and we, because we had a few people that kind of fell in between, and we didn't want to create a brand-new category for one person, but they were able to do these things within here. So it's more semantics than it is anything. It didn't change the rates for anybody, it's just changing where they fit into the categories.
Any questions for Rick?
Rick, what was Joe's pay range? I mean, does it fall into this right here?
Joe's was actually a little higher at that time.
Really?
Yes. And the reason was the fact that Joe came with so many years' experience, could pick up the ball running. We're hoping to find somebody with some of the experience, so that's why we're asking for a range. We did some research, what would it take to find somebody with the credentials we need to be able to accomplish that? And we felt this range will get us to where we need to be.
Now, this is a part-time position.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. Will this position go directly through you as hiring then, or, I'm sorry, or we have an example, an example to talk to this person?
Generally, this would be, just go strictly from the city manager, it would be interviewed by the staff. Ms. Manns and Ms. Everly will probably be doing some of the interviewing and so forth, and then make a recommendation. And then I would have the authority to make the hire on that as a part-time, just like we do on firefighters and police officers and so forth.
And just so that everybody knows, would you describe the job as a planner?
Well, I smile on that one, because I'm going to ask Ms. Everly maybe to stop up. She may be the better person to define that for you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Gwen.
That's okay. Is this because I was a little slow getting over here earlier?
No, no, just somebody was watching.
Yes.
And they want to know what is a planner?
Right. Actually, what the planner is responsible for doing, they do a number of things. One of which is for businesses who are looking to get permits, they handle the permitting process. So they will review applications, whether it's to expand a business, looking at doing signage for a business, or sort of putting a new business in. They'll look at those sorts of things. They're also responsible for residential properties. So if someone wants to put in a pool, they'll answer questions about fences, how do fences work, where do they go, what's required for that. They do those activities. They also serve the planning commission, as well as the boarding of zoning appeals, to help manage the meetings, run that process, maintain those records. It's actually a very hands-on sort of a position, a lot of opportunity to talk with the people, meet with residents, really get a real feel for what's going on in the community. And if people are interested in learning more about it, they're more than welcome to call me at 836-3500. They can also go to the website where the position is listed, which also-
This is unfilled.
It's currently unfilled, we're looking for someone.
We're looking for somebody.
Exactly. And so the information is on the website, as well as what they need to do to apply for it. The applications are due by April 14th, so there's a little bit of time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Okay, so is there a motion? Mayor?
So moved.
This is categorized as emergency, so you would have to vote on the emergency.
I'll move for an emergency.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel, to declare an emergency. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, is there a motion on the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll move to the resolutions. Will you read the title of the first resolution, please?
Resolution R-04-14-22. A resolution to approve the application of Russell and Anna Seiler trustees for placement of farmland in an agricultural district.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Sloan. Any discussion?
The only thing I don't see on any of them where they show anything of making any $2,500. And on 10 acres, 45 acres, you may be able to do it without a problem. But on 10 acres of farmland, $2,500, I'd think is a stretch, even possibly over a period of time.
Not with crop prices right now, trust me.
You could grow shiitake mushrooms and have that-
Well, you could grow pot, too, and have no problem making a whole lot of money on it. But it's not legal, and we don't want it, we don't want to prove it to be a pot farm.
Shiitake mushrooms are legal, though.
Well, I guess the question is, is there information that says that they actually earned $2,500?
That's what I'm saying, is there's no information in any of the three applications that say how much money they have made over the, the-
I guess Gwen's going to answer this question for us.
And the person, two of the people don't even live in the state of Ohio, that own the properties.
And-
Lives in West Milton, but-
I believe a lot of it is pretty much, it's on the owner's system. If you would like, again, you do have the option to sort of hold this if you would like, and we can reach out to those property owners and ask them for evidence of what they've earned on those properties.
Well, I think since this is higher by its code, I think we're bound by what the state of Ohio outlines as far as what's considered. I would, I propose that we table this until we get the information.
I would. One thing, I did go back and look at the ordinance. Council's required to either approve it, reject it, or modify it within 30 days from the date they submit the application. So I believe on all three of these, if I remember correctly, the 30 days would fall, the next meeting would fall outside the 30 days. So we'd have to have another meeting before the 17th. So if we reject it tonight, then can they reapply, or? If you reject it, I believe they can reapply. If you do nothing in the 30-day passes, it's deemed accepted, or approved, rather. I would, rather than rejecting it, my recommendation would be to table it, get the information, and have another meeting before the 17th, before the 30-days runs for consideration. Do you know if they've, I know they're required to submit documentation of the 2,500 to the auditor. And the fact that these are all renewals makes me think they have submitted that to the auditor, otherwise the auditor probably wouldn't have approved it in the first place, would be my estimation. But what we have here doesn't have- No.
Now, Gwen, or, excuse me, Martina, you just said they're renewals, they're already in the agriculture?
Yeah, they have, if you look at the top of the application-
Yeah, they're all renewals.
They, all three of them have the box checked that says renewal. And then I think they all have the screenshot from the auditor's website. If you look at that, it says land use description, A, at the one I'm looking at, it says A Cash Grainer General Farm. And that's the 10 acres. And that one's designated as a renewal. And I'm trying to, the Seiler is designated as a renewal.
I think they're all renewals.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they are. So that tells me they probably, I mean, I don't have the evidence, because I don't know what the auditor has on file, but that tells me they've probably already submitted the documentation to the auditor previously, and they're asking for a renewal rather than an initial application.
I would just like it to be clear.
I see, that's more of Martina's question.
Martina, can we approve them, subject to the auditor showing us the $2,500?
Object or modify?
Okay.
What does modify mean? I mean, how can we modify it? Like, if you want to do, for example, make the acreage smaller, say, okay, you can declare this 45, but there's no evidence or proof that this part of it is being used, so we can't prove that. Goes to things more like that.
Well, if they're making all these big bucks in the city of Clayton, shouldn't they be paying income tax to the city of Clayton on them, even if they live in Colorado?
I'll defer that one to Kevin.
If there aren't any in Clayton, they wouldn't be paying-
We have no record of them paying any income tax?
Well, we wouldn't. I'm looking at the dates, just to see if you decide to table it when. One of them, it looks like was submitted, I'm looking at the Seiler one, it looks like that was submitted on 3/12. The Grossberg was 3/14. And the Polson, it looks like it was 3/15. So 30 days from the earliest would be April 12th. The only thing that I could, any proof at all was the photos, which you can see, and I don't know how old these are, but you can see that they're not grass.
Legal descriptions also shows that it is part of the Ag District, and when it was in the Ag District.
So, what would you like to do?
I'm making a motion in favor of the approval.
Are you okay? Only because they're renewals.
Of the Seiler one?
Well, we have to-
Oh, we're going one at a time.
Yeah, we have to do that one.
I'd still like to see information, says that they've had $2,500 worth of income. I mean, since, suppose that was a condition of-
So do you want to table it and have a meeting before April 12th? I'm pretty sure.
I mean, can we have another meeting before, by April 12?
You'd have to give, today's the 3rd. Is it and/or? I'm thinking the public notification requirements, because you have to give notice to the owner at least-
It's less than 10 acres.
At least 10 acres, you don't even have to. 10 days before, and you have to give notice to the, in the newspaper at least. I'm just going to April 12th, that's not going to work.
Well, I guess I'm just concerned, there's going to be other properties that come up. And if we don't provide documentation or some sort of proof, the next group that comes forward won't necessarily have to provide documentation or proof.
If they're new, they will, because these are renewals.
Right. We actually have two more that will be considered at your next, next meeting, that came in after these came in. So we will make sure that those do have-
Are they renewals also, Gwen?
They are also renewals.
You're not going to sway on my vote, I mean, I don't care.
Okay, well, I, you know, I certainly share the concern that we need to have the proof of what, but it looks like we don't really have the time period now to do at least this one. Unless we reject it. And Martina doesn't- Reject it, and I believe they could probably, I'm not sure about that aspect of it, I believe they could reapply and present the proof. I'm not sure how the auditor's office would handle that. I believe that's how they might allow that to happen, but I'm not completely certain.
Would they incur additional cost if they had to go through and do that?
I don't know if the auditor charges a cost. I don't think the city charges an application fee for it. I don't know what the auditor's procedure is, but I don't-
It just seems a shame, you could, you know, get five minutes spending time with somebody, you could get an answer.
Yeah. Well, it would have been helpful if they'd showed, or sent a representative that could have answered the question, that would have been helpful.
Introducing to Kevin.
Well-
So, the motions stand.
What, do we have any motion?
We have a motion and a second.
On what?
Seilers.
Approve it.
To approve it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, then we'll vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Will you call the roll, please?
Sloan?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dietering?
Yes. Okay, will you read the title to the second one?
Resolution R-04-14-23. A resolution to approve the application of Benjamin S. Grossberg for placement of farmland in an agricultural district.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Ms. Kelly. Any discussion?
Just had the same concerns.
I would like to see, in the future, especially if there's more coming, that we would actually have that piece of documentation.
And I just make it clear, I am not in opposition to this being agricultural district clarification. I mean, I'm all in favor of it. I would just, we talk about documentation, revised codes, everything else, if you're doing with everything by the book, just, that's it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Will you call the roll, please?
Sloan?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dietering?
Yes. Will you read the title to the third resolution, please?
Resolution R-04-14-24. A resolution to approve the application of John and Sandra Polson for placement of farmland in an agricultural district.
I move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Henning. Any discussion? Will you call the roll?
Sloan?
Yes.
Henning?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Merkel?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Dietering?
Yes. Will you read the title to the fourth resolution, please?
Resolution R-04-14-25. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Jim Locke Excavating to abate judicially declared nuisance located at 14 Dorchester Drive at a cost not to exceed $7,250.
Well, Gwen, it's just, you're lucky knowing this one.
I know. Everyone else got acknowledgements earlier, so I'm just happy to be up at the podium, it works out great. This is a property, it's 14 Dorchester. Dorchester is a side street, it's a cul-de-sac that runs off of Main Street. The home was damaged by a fire back in May of 2011, and it was bought by a new owner in September of 2012. After that new owner bought the property, staff has worked with him to try and get him to improve it. He'd wanted to fix it up and actually live there on his own. So we worked with him to try and help him, give him some timeframes and some latitude to help him achieve that and get the house to be productive and a much nicer influence on the neighborhood. Unfortunately, that did not work, and we were forced to actually take him to the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas. And the Court of County Common Pleas gave the property owner until March 14th, 2014, to actually make the repairs to the home or to demolish it, and he did neither. As a result of that, to get rid of the blinding influence that this property has on the neighborhood, we went out for quotes, we got quotes from four companies. The best bid was $7,250, and that came from Jim Locke Excavating. So what we have presented to you tonight is authorization to work with Jim Locke Excavating to go out, demolish the structure, and basically get the property, it'll be, basically go back to be a nice grassy lot. He will be removing the house, he'll remove the basement foundations, as well as the He will be removing the house, he'll remove the basement foundations as well as the driveway and just sort of to get it to a nice level playing field so that hopefully someday it can actually be reused for another home.
Will he be responsible for reseeding?
Yeah. Jim will take care of the reseeding and everything as well. Yes.
And to make clarification, the house, is the house in a condition that's totally non-livable?
At this point, yes. The fire that happened was in the middle of the home and a significant portion of the roof was burned away. So, it is not livable.
It looks terrible.
It looks, it's very bad and it's gotten worse here recently as things have been taken away from the house. So, it really is at a point where it needs to just be taken away.
Will this gentleman retain ownership of the property?
He will retain ownership of the property, yes. Funding for the demolition will actually be coming from insurance money that was collected by the city at the time of the fire.
Will that be necessary to get the money back?
Correct.
Okay.
Gwen, I talked to you before, as many of us know, Jim Locke is a police officer with the city of Clayton. He's a part-time Rick.
That's correct.
But this is, has been bid properly and it is, we're not going out on any limbs by hiring Jim to do it.
No.
I know Jim does find work. I've seen his work before.
Yeah. He does very good work. He's bonded, has the appropriate insurance. Yeah, we, everyone had the same information to bid on the same package of work. His bid actually came back significantly lower than the other bids. So, we feel comfortable with that. We've talked with him about that and looked at conflict of interest issues as well and he's good.
We did look into the ethics and what needed to be satisfied and made sure that all four prongs of that ethics were satisfied before we...
Okay. Because I know sometimes before we were not able to have employee do certain job or things that we needed to have done as a city. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gorman, second by Mr. Merkel. Any discussion?
I know the people in Dorchester will be looking forward to this.
The gentleman was here last meeting, right?
Correct. Yes.
You noticed after the last meeting that I guess the homeowner was in the process of going through and removing more materials from the house. So, really at this point is a public nuisance and attractive movement at that.
And the property owner, if he has anything in the house, will be notified to remove it or...
He's aware and actually it's already been gutted and cleaned out. There's really nothing left.
Okay.
And I do have to give 30 days' notice. So, I'm going to mail the 30 days' notices out to say, hey, they took action on this last night and 30 days from now, they will demolish it. So, he'll get an additional notice in addition to all the other notices he's gotten up until this point.
Okay.
Okay. Because I, so he'll be filing for his permits and everything. You mentioned two weeks in the, but it'll really be 30 days before they do it.
In order to get that fire fund money, you have to give 30 days' notice to the owner and any lien holders just to make sure that they are aware of what's transpiring. So, that'll go out tomorrow.
Okay. Just so the residents know it'll be 30 days.
Right. And we'll have Jim, Jim is doing his due diligence work now so that when that 30 days is expired, he will be ready. And it will take him probably about a month to get everything back to the way we want it.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yep.
In a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Will you read the title to the fifth resolution, please?
Resolution R-04-14-26, a resolution to declare surplus equipment available for disposal through sale or auction.
Chief Hamlin?
Mayor, Council. Staff request that you declare a 2003 BMW L745i as surplus and sell at a public auction, whether it be Gov. Deals or Minutis bid. The vehicle was obtained through a forfeiture seizure of a Clayton police drug investigation and the staff feels that it wouldn't be physically responsible to keep it. It's a very nice car, but cost of maintaining it is going to be exceptionally high. So, we recommend that we place the vehicle on resale on an online auction. Any of the funds received from the online auction will go into the law enforcement trust fund. And as you know, we use that to purchase the computers and stuff for the vehicles.
So, you might actually get something for this?
The car's in extremely nice shape. For a 2003 BMW, it's really a nice car.
I'm surprised you ain't picking that one up yourself.
Yeah, you and Brian could switch every month.
Yeah. That'd be nice, man.
Well...
Now, that might be one of those conflicts of interest.
That's a conflict of interest.
Exactly. But the car is in pristine condition.
Actually, if the law enforcement could keep the car and use it for law enforcement purposes, it can't be used for any other city purpose, but it could be used for law enforcement purposes. But like I said, we don't deem it to be reasonable to accomplish that, so...
You don't want to do any of those, what are those trick car things that I've seen on True TV or something?
From what we're being told, that maintenance on the car, when it occurs, is extremely expensive.
Yeah. BMW.
Yes. Any questions?
So moved. Motion.
Motion by Mr. Merkel, second by Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Will you read the title to the sixth resolution, please?
Resolution R-04-14-27, a resolution to authorize the purchase of two police vehicles utilizing the state bid at a cost not to exceed $51,624.
Chief?
Counsel. Staff request that you authorize city manager to enter contract with statewide Ford Lincoln Mercury for the purchase of two 2015 Ford Interceptors. This is part of our current replacement for the vehicles. Two of the older vehicles have close to 100,000 miles. These new vehicles will replace that and this is budgeted in the 2014 capital improvement plan and it is on state bid. Total cost of both vehicles is $51,624.
So, you like those SUVs better than the other?
Yes. The sedan does get a little bit more gas mileage, but we pays the cost in putting the equipment in it. It's very tight. As you know, we have some very height-challenged and very width-challenged officers. The SUVs are very close to the Crown Vic in dimensions and they're easier to get in and out of the cars. And plus the added dimension on the SUV, all the equipment fits in very nicely and we don't have any, we have no problems with that.
The two vehicles that we're getting rid of, what year are they?
I believe they are, one's a 2010 and one is a 2011 Ford Crown Vic.
You guys put some miles on it.
Yes, sir. The one has 115,000 miles on it and the other one is close to 90.
Okay. And even those were kind of close on room on the inside, even those were.
The Crown Vics are very close to the SUVs and that's why we picked the SUVs. When we initially decided to purchase an SUV and a sedan, we knew that the sedan gave up some of the interior space, but we figured with the gas mileage, we'd come out ahead and we are seeing some savings in gas.
So, you're probably looking at what, another, you think four years is what you get out of them before you hit that right down?
Usually replace every three years.
Three?
Three years.
All right.
So...
And it says here that it offers all-wheel drive capability. Will these have that or...
Yes. The SUVs all have all-wheel capability. They work very well in inclement weather, especially the snow, the recent snows we had. The vehicles perform flawlessly. We didn't even have to go into the four-wheel drive.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move for motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Henning, second by Mr. Merkel. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. That brings us to the city managers' report.
Mayor, we, our next council meeting is scheduled for April 17th, but in between our next council meeting is actually our annual Easter egg hunt. It's scheduled for Saturday, April 12th at 9:00 a.m. We do that at Hardscrabble Park and at 9:05 a.m. it will be over with. So, if you're going to be there, you need to be on time. We do have that information on the website. If by some reason we need, if we have a really bad weather or anything, we will move that again to the 19th as a rain date, which is a Saturday before Easter so we can get that accomplished. We put out quite a few and I've lost count of how many thousands of eggs we put out. We use plastic eggs filled with candy and it's wrapped candy so the kids seem to have a great time with it, but it doesn't take long for them to pick up the eggs. It takes a lot longer for us to stuff the eggs than it does for them to pick them up. Also, this meeting will be on the public access channel 5 on Sunday, April 6th at 7:00 p.m. and Tuesday, April 8th at 8:00 p.m. However, we get, we received notice from Time Warner that effective June 3rd of 2014, they are going to discontinue the operation of these channels and the public access channels. So, they're no longer going to publicize these. Currently, what we do is we do make the, the meetings are available. If you get on the city website, we do, we record the meetings and play them on the city website. We believe that's probably the method, the direction we're going to go. There isn't a reasonable option for us at this moment. We're looking at a couple of other things, but in the meantime, everybody will be able to do that after June 3rd and we think that will still suffice for everyone. We hope so. For those, it'll be too late if you're watching this meeting, anybody in attendance, if you need some help with your Clayton, filing your Clayton city taxes, Friday, April 4th, which is tomorrow, from noon until 4:00 p.m., there will be somebody here to help you with that. And on Saturday, April 5th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon, will be somebody here also to help you. You can still have time to call ahead and make an appointment. It is helpful if you could do that. I want to let you just know a, we received a thank you letter from Northmont Education Foundation from this year's auction. This was the second year we provided, the fire department provided as for the auction, for the bid on it as a ride in the bucket truck or in the ladder truck with the fire department and we cook them a genuine firehouse dinner for up to five people and it's usually been a hit. They didn't tell us exactly how much it brought this year. They only put price list down for as far as the auction item, but the foundation, they actually were able to raise $34,000. And I know, Mr. Henning, you did your own portion in that and did your...
It's a great turnout, yeah.
Yeah. Also, one of the things that's not on your agenda packet, council members, is got in just a little later, but you all, I saw it in the paper today as well, is we're doing hydrant flushing, started April 1st. It's not really a big deal. We don't follow like we used to do, try to follow the same thing as the leaf areas and we don't really do that anymore because it kind of bogged us down. Good weather, they can get a lot more done. There isn't really a big problem to residents and anything we'd ask our residents is if you turn your water on, if you can tell if we're in your area, the water may be a little, have a little rust, just coloration or something in it. If you let it run for just a minute or so, it'll clear it up and you won't have any issues. It doesn't, it's not harmful to drink it or anything, but if you see that, just flush your toilets, run your water a little bit and it'll clear itself out. Also, I mentioned at the last meeting, and we should be having this scheduled out, on May 10th will be the first sweep Clayton clean down at, on Woolery Lane at Station 83. We'll have, we'll have all the dumpsters down there and I'm sure we'll have a lot of brush and it just doesn't include hazardous materials or tires and electronics or really not, which true or not to put electronics in there. There's another cleanup a little later on for electronics. And I believe that's all I have tonight, Mayor.
I had a question. I had got an email about the Time Warner Comcast merger and the man was wondering, did the city of Clayton have a contract with Time Warner that no other cable service could be offered here or...
Yeah, we have a contract.
We did. Will that contract be renewed once the merger happens or...
I don't have any direct information on that. I can only, I'll tell you, I believe that doesn't change anything. They're only merging and they, you do have qualified areas that they're in and you sign a contract for them to be in the area. So, I don't look for that to change. I'm sure they'll come to us if there's any differences in that.
Okay. But there's no way we could get out of the contract? I mean, I guess his concern is he can't get any other type of cable because the city's in a contract with Time Warner, so...
Yeah. You can't get other cable, but you could get, you know, the satellite or whatever.
There's a, there's a meeting coming up. It's a community alliance for media and it's going to be held by DATV and they're dealing with a lot of these issues right now, okay? Especially with Comcast and Time Warner coming together. So, Rick, you may want to check that out.
I will do that.
It's through DATV and it's a community alliance for media and they're dealing with a lot of cities right now who are all, we're all losing this. All the cities are participating, so there's a lot of energy being put into it right now.
I will take a look and see if one brings more information back on that.
Okay. Anything else for Rick? Okay. Oh, let me grab the, did you grab the sheet and see if there's any? I did. Visitors comments? Let's see. Mike Haney. Representative Haney, I see.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Nice to see everybody. I just kind of wanted to, I had not been here in a while. I kind of wanted to just kind of make myself available and so you all know, I mean, most of you know who I am anyway, but if you ever need me, I'm easily accessible. And I also wanted to quickly briefly touch on a bill that has got a lot of controversy that I'm one of the sponsors of. I just wanted to kind of touch on it from the horse's mouth type of presentation. When I decided went for office, I went to the businesses that I know and asked them, what's some of the biggest hurdles doing business in the state of Ohio? And surprisingly enough to me, municipal income tax was one of the top concerns. So, I did some research. Ohio's got one of probably the most complex municipal income tax system in the country. There's less than 10 that even allow every city to, or yeah, there's only a few that even allow cities to impose an income tax on businesses and individuals. And Ohio allows every city to impose their own income tax with their own rules, own definitions, own everything. And it becomes quite a burden on the taxpayer who deals with multiple jurisdictions, okay? The second most, we have over 600 different forms and people who are cities that tax. The second most confusing is Pennsylvania. They have 2,000 cities that tax, but they all do it one way. And then there's the city of Pittsburgh does it another way and Philadelphia does it another way. So, there's only three ways of doing it. We have over 600. So, that was my, that was my first agenda item when I became, when I decided to get elected and now three years, three and a half years later, we have now passed a bill. I would like to give you a little more information on the bill. You know, first of all, there's a lot of different solutions proposed. We had a lot of interested party meetings. It was not, you know, it was a very open, I have met with hundreds of people on different and interested party meetings. I met with Dave many a times. So, it's been well-vetted. Two possible solutions came. First one was, well, why doesn't the state just collect everybody so the businesses can only write one check and then they can distribute to the cities? Well, with cities, we're adamantly opposed to that. So, you know, working with our partners in the city, we decided, okay, we'll take that off the table. Let's just work on simplifying it. And the way to simplify it would have everybody play by the same rules. Everybody's got the same definitions, due dates, interest penalties, everything's the same, except we still allow the cities to do their own rate and their own credit so they can kind of control their own income. There's a lot of, a lot of things we've discussed about this, but I want to give you, two of the most controversial pieces of the bill are, one, the occasional entrant rule. If you imagine being a business and you've got 20 employees going 20 different directions every day, you have to track where they are every hour of every day so you can withhold the right amount of income tax and submit that to the cities, okay? Not unusual for a business to have to file 30 quarterly returns to 30 different cities and most of them, they owe less than $10. Okay? So, it's the cost of compliance, CPAs don't file those things for free, so the cost of compliance outweighs the cost of the tax. So, one of the things we addressed was occasional entry rule. The current rule says if you're in a city for 12 days or less, you don't have to withhold for that city. You just pay where the city, where the business is located. But if you go to 13th day, well, then you have to go all the way back to day one to withhold. Well, how do you retroactively withhold from somebody's paycheck? You can't do it. So, everybody withholds from day one, okay? So, it, when I ask businesses about this, as I go around and ask, I go, I ask them, what do you think about? You know, is it, is it a burden on you? They say three different answers. One is, no, it doesn't apply to me, when it really does. They don't understand the law. Number two is, that's crazy. I'm not about ready to do that. If they catch me, I'll pay it, but I'm not doing it. And the third way is, I do it, I comply best that I can, but it costs me more, it costs me a lot of money, okay? So, our proposal, and this is a compromise proposal, is you withhold from, if you're in a city 20 days or less, you don't have to withhold for that city, but you still withhold the city that you are, the business is located, or if that's not located in a city, you still withhold where the employee lives. So, they're still with paying the tax. It's just going to reduce the number of places they have to withhold. And then you start withholding on the 21st day. You withhold for that city, okay? Now, a couple of things that were big concern is that, now, that's a compromise because business community said that should be 30, 60 days, something like that, and the city said, well, let's keep it the way it is. So, we compromised on 20 days. Couple of things we did with that. Each employee is in one city per day. So, wherever you are at the preponderance of the day is the only city you have to withhold for. So, you don't have to track every hour. You just have to say, I was there five hours, that's the city I'm going to withhold for the whole day. And there was also concern that, you know, they're building a brand new school. And there was also concern that, you know, they're building a brand-new school, these guys are gonna come in here, they're gonna rotate employees out, they'll never have to pay any income tax. So we said, okay, if, if, on those type of projects, you withhold from day one. Okay? So the, the businesses will come in here, i- if they don't, um, that will be considered a place of, of business, and that they'll withhold from day one. They're saying, what about people from out of state? They won't, they won't be withholding. Well, we said, that place of business that you're gonna withhold from has to be in the state of Ohio. If it's not in the state of Ohio, then the place you're working will be considered your place of business. So, okay, so that, that pretty much, um, you know, we, we felt it was a fair compromise there. Residency rule. Currently, we use, um, we, the state of Ohio uses a bright line test, okay? Which means if you're in the state of Ohio for a hundred and eighty-one days, you withhold, you are a citizen of the state of Ohio, pay city, or state, you are, you're resident of the state of Ohio, pay state income tax. Well, cities all do it differently. They have, uh, we use more of a common law definition.
Representative, I, I hate to interrupt, and we'd be happy to put you on the agenda, but we have a five-minute rule.
Okay.
If you don't mind wrapping up what you were...
Okay, let me just touch on the last piece, it's the most controversial piece, is the net operating loss carry forward. If you're a business and you have a loss, should you be allowed to carry that loss forward to offset future profit? Okay, federal government says twenty years, state of Ohio says twenty years, most states use twenty years, the, uh, cities use anywhere from zero to fifteen years. We settled on five years, I think that's what City of Clayton already uses. Um, we had some compromises on that, too, but that's, that's where we are on that piece, and that's probably the most controversial piece in, in the whole bill. Um, because, um, you know, that should, if everybody's playing by same rule, same definition, it makes it a lot easier on, on every business that has to comply multiple jurisdictions. If you want me to come back, I'd be glad to come back. I just wanted to address this issue. I, I never know when I'm gonna be able to make meetings, so I, I saw Matt was gonna get his, uh, today, he's a friend, I, I wanted to be here, and I wanted to address the city, so...
Well, we're happy to have you, and thanks for coming, and I'm sure you'll be around if anybody has any more questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Deborah Irwin.
Deborah Irwin, seventy-eight, twenty-one, Allison. Same as always. Um, I just wanted to know, can a citizen get an issue on the council agenda, and how?
The way that a citizen, uh, gets an issue on the agenda is to approach either myself or the city manager.
Okay, do you give thirty days' notice about it, or is it, are there some things, rules surrounding it? Can it only be about certain things?
Well, the only people who can put issues on the, um, agenda are the city manager and myself, so...
Okay, so it has to be approved by one of you?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, did anybody else have anything? All right, that brings us to, uh, council. Uh, Mr. Slone?
Congratulations to our new chief of police and our chief of fire. I am, I am tickled to death you guys are, are here helping us and, and taking us into the future. Brian, you deserve every bit of it, Matt, you deserve every bit of it, man. We've gotta work some way to try and get, so that people can see these council meetings. It's terrible that Time Warner is, is pulling it from everybody, multiple, uh, cities. I would like to see us put some time in that. People really like seeing this stuff. It really does help connect us to the people that we're representing, so if, if you're interested in maybe going to that conference, I would ride along with you, and we could do the coffee and the whole thing, so, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Henney?
Congratulations, uh, you guys enjoy, well, becoming chiefs here. Um, also, I wanna say that Northmont's baseball team did pretty well, uh, here in Florida, so congratulations to them, and safe travels to everyone coming home.
Mr. Gorman?
I, I would also like to congratulate Brian and Matt, and, uh, wish you luck in your new positions, and we'll look forward to working with you. And I'd like to also thank Representative Haney for coming to our meeting tonight and filling us in on a bill which, as he said, is not very popular in most of the cities in the state, and it's becoming even less popular, I believe, as we go through it. But thank you anyway, Mike, for coming.
Mr. Merkel?
Uh, well, just like everybody else, congratulations, Matt and Brian, um, on your new positions. You've worked your way up through the ranks, so congratulations and look forward to working with you in the future. Rick, also, congratulations on formally being recognized, and to, uh...
And Martina.
Martina, congratulations. Uh, last week at Wright State, we had a, um, lab sustainability program that was run, and we had a couple individuals come in from, um, one individual from Montgomery County Solid Waste, and another individual from Green County, and they talked about disposal of, of household hazardous waste materials. And in the course of conversations, I was talking with one of the gentlemen there, and I'll just look up his name here, and his name was John Woodman, and I happened to mention to him the fact that I live in Clayton, and we were doing this sweep Clayton clean event, and he spoke very highly of, of Sherry and her efforts, and he said it would be very nice if other municipalities in Montgomery County were as easy to get along with as Sherry was in terms of trying to set up these programs. And I think from the standpoint of having somebody from Montgomery County recognize the efforts that this city puts forth in terms of helping the citizens in this community, I think speaks volumes. So I sent an, an email to Rick to make sure that Sherry was recognized for her, uh, efforts, that Montgomery County did see it and did recognize the fact that it was a, a valued asset program, and they wished other people did it. So I just wanted to pass that along. And also, this past week, there was a newspaper article that mentioned that, uh, the Onkel Doodle Do, Onkel Doodle Moo restaurant that's up in Inglewood is gonna be moving to Randolph Plaza, and I think that getting that operation into Randolph Plaza gives us an opportunity to work with Randolph Plaza, to promote a local eatery, and, um, promote Randolph Plaza, and make it a viable entity. So I'm looking forward to Gwen working with these people, and, uh, understand there's another operation going in as well to, um, make this a viable entity for the city. So I'm looking forward to that for the city, and, uh, thank you, Gwen, and good luck.
Ms. Kelly?
Well, just wanna congratulate again both chiefs. That's an amazing accomplishment. You guys deserve it. Looking forward to the future. Thank you.
Okay.
I have one other thing, Mayor. I would like to congratulate as an alumnus of the University of Dayton, the work that the basketball team did in the past two weeks. Uh, it put the city of Dayton right in the national forefront, and I know that two or three of us are graduates of, uh, of UD, and, uh, I think they did a great job, and congratulate. The girls also made the NCAA. They didn't get quite as far as the guys did, but...
Florida took 'em both down.
It, uh, put, put Dayton right out, like I said, right out in the forefront of the news for two weeks, so...
Yep.
Yeah, Kenny wanted to put up his sign, but we don't have that, do we?
Yeah, our sign was damaged in the windstorm. Rick had told me.
We no longer have a viable sign. A couple months ago, the windstorm took it out. I thought we could borrow one from the Associate Fire Association, and it turned out the sign we've used all this year was the Fire Association.
Rick, if you wouldn't mind telling the service department men, thank you for taking on this improvement to the, um, government center property as well. We appreciate it a lot.
I'm sure we'll pass that along, and I hope that as the summer goes along, you'll be able to see improvement after improvement, and everybody will, will, will comment on it and, and be able to give them their own at that time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just one more thing. The, if, if you've been a member, if you've lived in this area for the last forty-odd years, um, today is the fortieth anniversary of the, of the tornado that hit, hit Xenia, and being of age when, uh, I can remember when it happened, um, April third, nineteen seventy-four, happened to be my senior year in high school, but, um, you don't know the power of a tornado until you see an F-five tornado come roaring through your backyard. And it just so happened to be that my roommate in college, his now-wife's father was working